I'd like to throw this meeting in the Monticello City Council of order. Would you please rise and join me in reciting the pledge and writing with us in prayer? I pledge allegiance to the black of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands a nation under God, indivisible, and just for all.
Father, thank you. Like we do every time, thank you for bringing us together and especially this time, thank you for bringing Mary and her daughter back safely in that chaos. Before we ask you to be with us tonight and speak, help us to speak truth and to do things well and do things in order, we thank you and pray to your name. Amen?
Amen. Roll call, please.
Ms. Muse? Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. Harland?
Here.
Mr. Reed? Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Thank you.
And Mr. Kemp?
Here.
You have a call?
Thank you. Public participation, anyone know, there's no one present online? Thank you. Moving on to consent agenda. What documents and action items is listed? Claims report, claims dated June 14, 2022 through June 27, 2022. Meeting minutes, city council meeting minutes, June 13, 2022. Budget report, May 2022. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions before we vote? You're hearing or not, hearing none or not seeing anyone looking for my attention for a change? Jill, go ahead.
Ms. Muse?
I'll stop.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Kemp?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Mayor's report. Upcoming events, this Friday is the Reds, Whites, and Blues at Allerton Park and Retreat Center live performance of Billy Galton, the Blues Deacons, and Mississippi Heat begin at 6:00 PM. The Monticello Freedom Fest is Sunday, July 3, beginning at 4:00 PM with kids games, food vendors, music balloons, novelties, airbrush, and a raffle. Fireworks start at 9:00 PM. Support the Monticello Music Boosters and avoid the traffic by taking the shuttle from the high school or take the fireworks train through the Monticello Railroad Museum. The next Monticello movie night, Ghostbusters: Afterlife, will be Saturday, July 9 in downtown. Thank you to RE/MAX Realty Associates for sponsoring this movie. Beginning July 1, residents will be able to complete an online survey for the comprehensive plan update. We want your opinions on what direction you would like to see the community grow towards over the next 20 years. Residents who complete the survey will be entered into a drawing for Monticello Chamber Bucks. City Council, please remember that Samoa Central Illinois Municipal Office Officials Association will be meeting on July 21 in Mohammed. I would encourage you to attend if you can do that. Please let Jill know if you will be available. It's in Mohammed. I don't know where the...
We haven't received a formal invitation. This was just to save the date. So I will forward it and it will have all the information on it and you can let me know. We do cover that cost if you choose to go. So can I send that out? You can let me know back if you're able to go.
It's a nice meeting. There's usually a nice meal and the program is usually very interesting. So anyway, that's my report this evening. New business, ordinance 2022-21, an ordinance approving the First Amendment to the redevelopment agreement between the City of Monticello and Ashoken Properties concerning the property located at 217 West Washington Street, Monticello, Illinois. Callie?
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance just extends the deadline for the building improvement grant project that the council approved in January. Same thing that we had last fall with kind of a delay in contractors and materials. But this one is for the Prairie Fire Glass Building. And I believe the painting should start the week of the 11th and their custom order windows should be in late, mid to late July.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2022-21, an ordinance approving the First Amendment to the redevelopment agreement between the City of Monticello and Ashoken Properties concerning the property located at 217 West Washington Street, Monticello, Illinois?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions before we vote? Hearing or seeing none, Jill?
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kemp?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on, ordinance 2022-22, an ordinance approving the First Amendment to the redevelopment agreement between the City of Monticello and Paramdam Incorporated DBA Subway of Monticello concerning the property located at 122 North Charter Street, Monticello, Illinois. Callie, Joe?
Thank you again. This is extending the deadline of June 30 to September 30 of this year. Similar situation. The contractor for this, however, just finished up four buildings on the north side of the square and I believe the subway building is the next one on the list. So we're getting new roofs everywhere, which makes me excited.
Okay. I need a motion to approve ordinance 2022-22, an ordinance approving the First Amendment to the redevelopment agreement between the City of Monticello and Paramdam Incorporated DBA Subway of Monticello concerning the property located at 122 North Charter Street, Monticello, Illinois. Is there one? Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions? Not hearing or seeing any? Can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kemp?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance 2022-23, an ordinance approving the final plat minor subdivision of Combs Edition, Piatt County, Illinois. Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. That's correct. Ordinance 2022-23 is an ordinance approving the final plat for a minor subdivision of the Combs Edition, City of Monticello, Piatt County, Illinois. Mr. Robert Cox of Survey Solutions and the owner, Joseph Combs, have submitted the final plat that was attached to the agenda item for the staff review. The subdivision is located within the city limits and it's just east of Circle Drive off of Market. The subdivision went through the city review and it's required that the city council approve it by way of ordinance. The subdivision had met all the requirements set forth in our municipal code 152.044F, specifically that the plat depicts a total of two lots. The plat includes all contiguous property in common ownership. The subdivision does not necessitate... necessitate the destruction of any public improvements. There's no waivers that needed to be granted and there aren't any public improvements within the subdivision either that need to be approved. The access is going to come directly from Market Street and an existing driveway opening. The owner will be constructing, constructing single-family homes in the near future. So it's recommended the city council discuss and approve the final plat minor subdivision for the Combs Edition, the City of Monticello, Piatt County, Illinois has submitted.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2022-20, an ordinance approving the final plat minor subdivision of Combs Edition, Piatt County, Illinois?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions, Jim? Yes, not. Can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Harland?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Mr. Kemp?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Moving on to residential waste hauler licensure discussion. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So ahead of the last city council meeting on Wednesday before, you should have all received the 2000 waste hauler request for proposal. We discussed it in pretty good detail at the last city council meeting. So it's on for discussion again this evening. One of the things that came up during the last council meeting that I thought I would reach out to some of the waste haulers, two of the waste haulers. As far as, I think, older woman Harland asked how common is a one hauler type system? I don't know if this really answers your question, Ms. Harland, but I reached out to three waste haulers. Two of them returned the email. One hauler had 72 municipal accounts and ranging in size from 38,000 households to 34 households. The other waste hauler had 21 municipal accounts and I listed those from Parkville Accounts in Bloomington and Springfield to smaller markets like Coopston, Waseka, Thomas Borough, and about 18 other communities. Tuscola, I reached out to Tuscola. The city manager down there, he, Tuscola, uses a third waste hauler that's in the market today nearby. So at the last council meeting, I thought we had pretty good discussion. So I addressed that. I think we talked about some of the obstacles or hurdles the council faced in 2018 in pretty good detail. And then we talked about some of the advantages, specifically the roadways, the wear and tear and maintenance issues we have with roadways and if we limit the number of trucks running up and down the roads, that would be of benefit. With a contractual request for proposal, you know, if you want to sign, if we, if we're going down that route and you want a three-year contract, five-year contract, whatever that looks like, the prices are fixed for that duration. We talked in great detail currently of the four licenses available. There's only one waste hauler licensed to operate in the city limits and that is GFL currently. So again, I'd like to open it up for discussion this evening and then I did put on the agenda in case the council so desired to actually make a motion for staff to draft the RFP and go down that road. It's going to take a little bit of time to do that. So I wanted to kind of see where everybody was going to weigh in at and then we'll either go down that road now or not go down that road now. So Mayor, if you guys want to discuss it or ask more questions.
You had a couple of weeks to think about it and you've had a couple of weeks to, some time to look at what he presented this evening. Do you have any comments or questions, Terry? I think it's real important that we get this rolling so that when it comes up time to renew, you have something in place, so.
I have a question.
I think, let me say real quick, I think Kevin did a good job in the newspaper.
Yes, he did.
Because I think council wanted some feedback. Council wants to discuss this in open and good, so I thought Kevin did a good job putting it in the paper. I've not heard anything.
I haven't either.
From anybody. I don't know if we got any phone calls. Jill, up front?
Nicole and I were discussing it today in anticipation of that question and the calls didn't really differ after the discussion and the article. It was, they're really still just the same. I'm either not getting picked up, which those have decreased, and then people having billing questions. We've been giving, you know, that information out, but I've kind of paid attention to, to listen and see if we had any reaction. Did you, have you gotten any calls more? So. And Nicole had said the same, that it's mostly just the same calls. They're starting to go down, but still getting some.
Terry, you said last time it was two to three months discussion, right, before they made a decision? Public weighed in. I think to try to make a motion two weeks after we discussed it, right after it's in the paper, I think it's too early to start something before we, you know. I think the one piece of information that's important is if, is sort of a quick survey of haulers to say, yeah, we would be interested if you do a licensing, here's, or we would be interested if it was only one. And if we get the answer back that, hey, we're only interested in coming here if there's one, then that's probably answers that question and the reason there just aren't as many haulers. So I mean, I don't think that that's not necessarily not the direction we're going to go. I just think it's too early to make that motion.
Can I address that?
Sure.
The only thing this, when you do this, I can't remember, RFP, is you're really not doing anything. All you're doing is putting, getting, getting the paperwork done in case that's the direction you want to go when it's time, time to go. Because it doesn't, it takes time to put that together.
Why wouldn't we also put the proposal together to go to the licensing in case that's the direction we want?
Well, I think we're, I think that's still on the table. This is not a decision to do anything. All this is doing is directing him to get everything in order so that if we decide to do this, it's ready to go.
But the only motion is not precluding for one hauler. There is not a motion to do the RFP.
But that doesn't make any difference. We may not go with one hauler. All this says is if we're going to have one hauler, this needs to be in place.
Because we already have multiple haulers.
Right, or have, right.
We don't now though, right? But no one wants to do it. It's possible that we could. I mean, that...
This is not pre...
...language is already in existence.
Terry, haven't you already done basically a survey of the carriers anyway on what they would be willing to do and not do?
So we already have a current licensing policy. That's already in effect. That went into effect 2015 and that's what we've been operating on since then. There's four available licenses and we currently have one occupied.
That's, I was just trying to clarify that. So we wouldn't necessarily...
There's still four.
...make that motion because that's already in existence.
So we wouldn't need that then if we decide to do the, to put an RFP together for one hauler and we decide we don't go down that road, we don't need an RFP for a license?
That's right.
License is already, it's already in place.
That's right. The license is all on the books already.
Right. And it doesn't expire, right?
No.
Our contract.
So they renewal, they have, there's an annual renewal that they renew for the upcoming year.
Right. This doesn't change any of that.
No.
This doesn't change any current, anything that's on the books already.
So Republic is one of the haulers that submitted an RFP last time. Republic is not interested in any, any licensing. They want, they want, they want a contract, one hauler. Waste Management and GFL are two licensed haulers, most recent licensed haulers. Waste Management left town, for lack of a better term. Waste Management, all of their customers or whoever wanted to go with GFL then signed with GFL, right?
Yeah.
Knights out of Mansfield recently indicated that they might be interested in a license, but we don't have one submitted for them. They haven't applied and they would not be interested in a one hauler system.
They would not be interested in a one hauler. They want just a small amount.
They, they just said they would not be interested in...
The whole sale.
...in bidding on a one hauler system. Now, I believe Farmer City, they were, Farmer City, Knights was operating in Farmer City when Farmer City went through the bidding process. And Knights didn't get to bid, so.
I have a question. If we, if we did end up going, you know, putting out the bid for a one hauler system, if people, if there are, you know, some residents in town who are just adamantly against that, would they still have the option to seek trash on their own if there's still a license in place from, like for example, the, who we currently have? Or does that sort of negate all of that and...
So at one time we had, so there's four available licenses. Those were created in 2015. Any four waste haulers could apply for a license, up to four. And we had three at one time. So Advanced Area and Youngs. You could choose any one of them. You could change back and forth whatever you wanted to do. We were down to two waste haulers. Now we're down to one waste hauler. And there's no pricing contract whatsoever. The one waste hauler, we have no control on what they charge you.
The answer to your question is no, they can't choose anybody else.
Because they're licensed to...
If we go to a single hauler, that's all everybody gets whether they're happy or not.
So the single hauler trumps any people that are licensed?
License goes away with the single hauler.
Okay. I wasn't sure about that last, the last...
They renew their, their license every year, but they're...
But they would not have the option to renew.
They wouldn't have the option.
Got it. Okay.
Sorry. Yes.
Bidding process.
Thank you, Rodney.
I'm Mr. Simple, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make it clear from the public standpoint that just by doing this, we are not leaning one direction.
No.
We're not making a decision, this is the direction. Because I think people may look at it and say, oh, they've already decided this is what they're going to do. We're just opening it up for...
Where are the concerns for?
Have you had a lot of, have you...
That's what I'm asking too.
I'm calling you and commenting.
I did have someone who had contacted me. Contacted by three people. Yeah. One, I take that back, four. One person was concerned with the current company because of the inconsistency in the billing. And then the other three reached out to say they feel like it's important to go to one hauler to reduce the amount of truck traffic in town, given, you know, the current state of some of our roads and just the cost of the repaving and pothole fixing and whatnot. So, so out of, out of four, I had one and the concern wasn't beyond, I feel like what most people have said. Now, that being said, anyone who's been involved in switching over to a new system, so you have this company that's switching over, adding in accounts and whatnot, there are, there's always going to be a period of growing pains until it gets worked out. And I feel like we're still in those growing pains, I hope. I mean, they're going to go out of business if they don't fix it.
The person who contacted me, same situation, completely dissatisfied with the service they're getting, inconsistent, will go weeks at a time without pickup. When she calls the company, she can't get a hold of anybody, you know. And she also shared that, you know, when we had, council had this discussion a few years back, she was a person who was against going to a one hauling haul system, but that, you know, she didn't come out and directly say that she would have changed her mind, but she seemed much more open, you know, because of all of the issues. She's, I think it's like she doesn't care anymore. She just wants reliable, consistent trash service.
They want their trash picked up.
So I don't, I hear what, what Mike was saying about, you know, making sure it's not like a rush, but I do wonder though if, if we really wouldn't have quite the same amount of, you know, negative outcry or backlash if we were to suggest it in more of a short term, just based on the one conversation that I had, but just because she, she was on, you know, in the no camp before and now it's sounding like she'd be thrilled to have a one haul system that is...
And wouldn't it be nice if we already had more than one in town, but we don't, you know? And so, so we could keep it with multiple, but it doesn't mean that there will be multiple.
But it also doesn't mean that there won't be. Apparently Knights is looking about, you know, they may...
A portion.
They may buy a license and pick up some...
Well, Knights has, Knights have recently come under new ownership. It got bought just a matter of a couple of months ago. And the new owner now does live in Mansfield. He's begging for drivers and all, but it's still a small operation. He does not have trucks the size of area wide trucks. He has trucks the size of what Youngs used to have, the smaller, smaller compact trucks. I know he services Farmer City and I don't know how far he's, you know, willing to go. I know the guy not, I shouldn't say personally, he's a white horse court house in touch. I know that he purchased it and, you know, what it went through and he's doing the best he can to get it up and going again because it was in, not in very good shape when he bought it. You know, the trucks needed repair and he didn't have any drivers and up and around, but people were begging for the service, so he stepped up and is trying to provide the service. But I've not asked her about any of it or put that out there, you know, to see, but I know he's trying hard to service Farmer City. He may step, he may step out, but he is a smaller, he's a smaller provider. He's not, like I say, he doesn't have the vehicles and stuff that area's got, well, area used to have, now they're all GFL. I think, I think GFL, when they jumped in and were able to take that over, obviously everybody's seen that around town, they didn't, they're not rebranding the trucks. I think that's what's confusing. I know people have come to ask me, and so how come, how come they don't have any trucks that say that on? No, because they just bought the equipment and they didn't strip and paint and put new decals on and everything. And the other waste hauler that left, obviously left all his totes in town because I think he just told GFL, hey, if you want them, you can have them. We're not going to come back and pick them up because they have not picked them up. They're, you see new GFL totes, but then there's area totes and there's, there's other brand name totes sitting around, you know, but they're all getting picked up by the same truck, you know? I think when they jumped out, they said, well, you can have, what's, what's on the curb is yours. You just do whatever you want to do with it because we don't want them back.
Terry, wasn't in some of your conversations with the trash haulers, wasn't it kind of, should we say, implied that they're taking care of their contractual obligation places given a priority over, let's just say, free market?
Last, last year, Mayor Sonar and I, Callie, met with representatives from GFL and Waste Management because we were hearing, and the front office was hearing a lot of complaints. And one of the haulers point blank said, when we bought out X hauler, our first obligation was to those accounts, those municipal accounts we had contracts with. And we were all kind of offended because I view that license as the contract with me. That's not how it's viewed. He has a contract, they have a contract for 2,000 accounts in a town. The other licenses, whatever you want to call them, played second fiddle to, I have a whole town to take care of.
So he's implying that we'll get better service if we do what they want? Is that what you're saying, Kimmy?
One of them said...
Point blank?
Blank.
Get better service if we do, play their ballgame.
When we bought company X out, our first obligation, like those growing pains, I've got to input all this new data, but I've got a whole town to take care of. That was their first concern.
Continuing the service for the customers who had already been established and then working in the new ones in.
Yeah, I mean, the data, the data was there, they just took that over and hit the ground
When have we had a company that always picked up on the scheduled dates, never missed, and had seamless billing?
I don't think we ever did. Oh, I think we did back when, when Leach and, oh, and Ron Wolf did it, maybe. That was only 100 years ago, but I mean, there was, service was awesome.
1985.
That could be before then.
I was just hoping there was that elusive company out there that we could try... I was just hoping there was that elusive company out there that we could try to.
I mean, there's the, there's the trucks breaking down, there's labor shortage, inclement weather.
So, so what would happen if we went to a single hauling hauler, you know, system and they didn't follow through? What kind of consequences in a contract? Like what, what do you do as a city? You know, because I wonder too, if people think, well, it's not going to be any different and now you're taking away my choice. What's going to be different? Like if they don't show up and pick up your trash when they're supposed to? You know?
I think you can place those repercussions in the contract. The contracts that I've seen have, have a bond, a letter of credit of $50,000, $200,000, whatever. Can go and if you've got to pay somebody to do their job for them, you have that letter of credit.
But how, how does that work? Okay, you've got a letter of credit, they go bankrupt or whatever happens. And also, and so we've got a windfall of 50 to whatever, 100,000 dollars or whatever it is. But we've already said, we only want one hauler and you guys didn't make the bid. Are they going to come back? Do you think they're going to come back in and say, oh yeah, we'll help you out now?
No.
I would, I mean, I mean, think about, I mean, think about, think about Republic now. Republic doesn't want to come back in here. They want, they want, they want the contract. But if they go belly up, where are we?
That's the crap shoot you take with any of them. I mean, you can't, you can't, that's a what if.
I understand what you're saying as a crap shoot, but what I'm saying is this, then if we don't do the single hauler and we have five licenses, then we've got somebody can buy a license and come show us up. If we cut ourselves to one for the second time, these people are going to have to go through the bid system and lose. I don't know, they're going to be very willing to come help us out.
I don't think I've thought that far ahead. I'm always.
Try not to.
I'm always, I'm always one of these people that really believes that people are going to do, do you good.
Basically good people.
That they're basically other people and you hope they're honest and they're going to do what they say they're going to do.
Well, I believe, and also no, bankruptcies, nobody's going out to try and get a bankruptcy. That's not, you don't go through a bankruptcy alone, you just, life happens. Too many trucks break down and then you can't recover from that or something, you know?
I'm a little bit on the same lines. It's like, I don't understand what does it hurt to have those other sitting there in case somebody wants to come in and do the license insurance and so forth? I mean, basically we have one hauler. But it's always an option there if somebody else does want to come in and help out and so forth. And it does give people an option if they want it.
Is there any?
If they're having trouble with the correct hauler or there's some type of a conflict or whatever.
Is there any reason they can stay, the license or licenses can't stay on the books? If we go to one hauler, even if we don't use them? You have to grant them before any, you know?
Uh, I don't believe so. I think if you go with a request for proposal to, to bid, right? On municipal refuse and recycling, right? Your bid, you're wanting a bid for one contractor, right? To come in and do the whole city, right?
And I'm just, I think what they're saying, I get what they're saying. If that company, if company that, that gets the contract comes in and bellies up. Are we still going to have something on the books where we could give someone a license in the, in the unlikely event that whoever, whoever owns the.
You have to grant it in the art, in the, in the contract.
Yeah.
In case of bankruptcy. But you just need, I don't think you could have a license where somebody could come in and I'll give you $10,000.
If you don't, if you don't, if you don't give them a license, they, they can't use it. You're going to have to prove it. I don't know why it couldn't sit on the books. If you don't give it to someone, it doesn't, why can't it lay there? I'm just asking, I don't know.
In the event that a company goes belly up, they wouldn't be using the license. And so then it would be there and available. We have to go through our process.
If it's, if it's a single hauler, there's no license necessary. We, we've come into a contractual agreement, so there's no need, there's no license involved.
You can have, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, that's why they're not, that's why they're, I mean, you talk about leaving them sit there. But if you leave them sit there and the contractor, the contractor knows that, they may be hesitant to sign that paper. You know, you know what I'm saying?
I don't, I don't think a contractor is going to come in if you have, sell on the books, that somebody else can take their customers away.
Right, they're, they're not going to want to sign, they're not going to, no, so you've got to close off.
If you put into the, into their contract though, if it was like an, like a, an emergency clause or something, I don't know what you would call it. But in the event that that single contractor could not fulfill their obligations, that they are aware that, you know, the city of Monticello would still have X amount of licenses open for another company to come in. Because I think that would put people at ease. But the, you know, those would, could, would only be used in, in an emergency situation like that. It, it wouldn't just be, well, someone can just randomly come in and get a license. It would have to be that, you know. Yeah, the company wasn't fulfilling their contracts. And if you worded it in such a fashion, it could potentially, you know, mean that the city could make the decision that we're unhappy with their service and we would like to terminate the contract and go back to, I don't know, just sort of a safety net, I guess.
If you went, if you say you signed a three-year contract with somebody, then to me, I think they're one year renewable, you know, some options or whatever. Just so that there's sort of incentive to make sure that that first year or two is they're doing a good job. And then maybe we as a council says, yeah, we'll, we'll be up at then based on what, how they perform. And that way there's, there is a, something, some consequence where if there's, if it's really bad.
Yeah, the first RFP I think was a five-year contract. And then you could renew it, I think on an annual or three-year term. That was built into the contract. So at the end of that contract, services aren't what you want or desire, we could rebid it.
I don't know how hard somebody would want to bid, they'll like if they think that if they come in a year and we're just, all of a sudden we decide we don't like them very well, we're going to rebid it again. So what's their incentive?
What's, what's the incentive to have a contract?
For a contract.
On the other basis.
Somebody's going to want a three to five year contract to come in and really bid on something. And then as Terry says, then you look at an annual renewable, self-renewing type thing. Or go out for an extended period of time. If you want somebody to come in for, for a decent rate or whatever, something I think we would have more control over. We would have more teeth, I think, in enforcing getting the trash picked up than the license that we have right now. We really need to have a three or five year agreement, I think. You have control of your rates. Like I said, we have no control right now. If GFL wants to come in tomorrow and says it's $50.
Yes.
$50.
It's $50. What are you going to do?
See, there's nothing I can do because we want to take away the license, just so I can't even try and call somebody to.
There's nobody that wants.
There's no one else. They're not standing in line, they're going to take this other license.
Take it away, there's nothing there for them to be winning by.
We take out one haul.
I understand that.
One haul.
I know, but you know what? At one point we had three haulers.
We have one.
Go back and forth on that same argument. You don't know what tomorrow's going to bring. But if we get to one hauler, we put ourselves in a bind. Well, I mean, you can, you can shake your head and, and be, I, I understand that. I don't buy, I don't buy that it's going to be better in the long run. I believe, I believe we're going to be caught into something that we're stuck in. I do not believe that it's going to improve the roads. I believe that, I, I, there's so many other vehicles that go over these roads.
Well, you can talk to Jim about that.
Just saying, I mean.
Anything else?
I think the farther, I think the farther that you get out also, and I know, I don't know how many of you have ever dealt with this, but I've been around the business a while. The bigger you get, the more administration comes with everything. And it would not be unusual if you've got a large company in GFL, I don't know what their standard is. But if your drivers become Teamsters. If they say, my guys are Teamsters, belong to Teamsters Union, that Teamsters go on strike. You're not going to get your trash hauled. You've, you've seen that, it's happened, I mean, it happens in big towns, I'm in Chicago, places, you know, New York, whatever. But if you've got Teamster drivers and then GFL says, hey, we, you know, I got 200 trucks on the road. My guys are going to, we're going to join the Teamsters, we're going to be Teamsters. And the Teamsters go on strike. You don't have any choice. You're, you're not going to get your trash picked up. And many times it, it doesn't get settled in a week or 10 days or two weeks or whatever. And you just kind of got in the back of your mind, think, what around town here? If you didn't get your trash picked up for two, three weeks, it's, it's a terrible mess, you know? It is what it is. We're a small town. We don't, you know, we've not dealt with that. But I'm not, I say the bigger company, the bigger the companies get that you're inviting to be part of the game. The more chance you run that something like that's going to sneak up on them. They're going to say, well, this, this is, you know, what it is. And truly as Tosses, we have no control over them right now. Firstly, nothing. It's a handshake thing and I don't know, they're doing fine by me. I'm not complaining about my trash pickup, but by the same token, it could change, as, you know, Terry, it could change tomorrow. We, we really don't know, you know? So I, I don't want the people in town that we represent to get the idea that we're, you know, we're going down the road we went before. Trying to force something on them because I, I really think the honest part of it is, we are trying to negotiate something that gets the best deal for the money. You know, the best bang for your buck. If we only got to do it with one guy, that's what we got to do it with. I don't, you know, maybe nobody's willing to come in and play the game. I don't know. But something to think about, I guess. We got to try, got to try something, you know?
Can I get a motion directing the city administrator to draft the residential refuse and recycling collection program? Request for proposals for future contractual agreements with one waste hauler?
Go move.
For a second? Any more comments, questions?
Can we make sure there's an understanding that does not mean that's what is happening?
Right.
It just means that it's now.
If we choose to do this.
It's available.
And it's in place to.
It is a draft proposal.
Anyone else have a comment? Can I have a roll call, please, Jill?
Ms. Muse?
Yes.
Ms. Seabans?
No.
Ms. Harlan?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Vogt?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Burris? Mr. Kim?
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All their persons report, so let's start with Ashley.
Hi. The beans on my big report with the trash discussion.
That was it?
That was it, yep.
That was it? I think I talked to the same person that you talked to. And I suspect that Mary probably talked to the same.
Most more possible, yeah.
I got hit at like quarter to six in the morning with the dog outside.
Oh.
It was in my, you know, my t-shirt and shorts.
Yeah. Terry coming.
Nothing's happening.
Mike, Thomas? Mike?
Mike.
Rodney?
Good fun.
Uh, only to remind everybody here and reminding everybody else you see, tomorrow is an election day here in Monticello. It is not a huge ballot, but it is a ballot. So please take your opportunity to vote and encourage anyone you know to come and vote. We are open from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM and all the polling places are open, so exercising. Thank you.
And along the same line, you might want to check your voter cards because they sent new ones out. And where we're sitting right now used to be two wards and it's not anymore. So make sure you look on your voter's card to see where you're supposed to vote.
Point well taken.
Oh, good idea. Okay, if one and two used to vote here and I don't know if they've moved to, I think the library.
Library.
The old library, the old library.
Community.
Community building.
Community building.
Mary?
Couple things, I was asked, um, two separate times, two separate incidences about how often the city paints lines for parking and. Oh gee. So.
Oh, Wendell loves that.
I, but I don't know and I apologize. Typically I would have brought this up before, but I, I was out of town. So that's just a, if you have an answer, otherwise I'm sure it will get done because it's on a list somewhere.
Crosswalks, depending on where they're at, we know about them or don't know about if they need refreshed paint. We usually hit the crosswalks near the schools before school starts. And then, um, I just noticed by flipos, those parking stalls are gone.
Yes.
And we have been trying to get somebody to give us a quote for restriping the truck route, farm and truck route in downtown for probably three years.
Got to get the answer to the phone.
We are, we just spoke about that two weeks ago. So we're trying to get the pavement marking refreshed.
And I have, I have nagged about it consistently, Terry can, you know.
Now it's on the books. And then I just wanted to express my appreciation for community members who make personal phone calls, send emails or signed correspondence when they have a concern or something that they would like to compliment the city on. It's really difficult when an anonymous letter is sent, um, just to follow up with that person. I feel like to me, that's the most important piece. If there is a concern or something that they want to compliment about, I like to be able to follow up. And when it's an anonymous letter, that's impossible. So.
I got the same one.
Frustrating at best. I'm sure you.
As did I.
And with, and 12 hours of receiving it, there was not an issue.
Right.
So I, I wanted to really be able to follow up and say thank you, but this is taken care of and could not.
Definitely that's where some people work, so.
Yep.
Anything else, Council? Chief, you got a report tonight?
Um, no, I just have one thing though. And this, this, uh, the reason I bring up this is several of the people at, at our office also work with this individual. But, uh, this is a thing from the sheriff's office that says, who are sending here in the passing of Alice J. X-74. Last two days, uh, June 25th, 2022, at 150A of Byac County, Arizona. Alice, or Miss A, as those junior worked there. Uh, during the 30 or 10 years of Byac County Sheriff's Office as a dispatcher, not anymore telecommunications. Served the citizens of Byac County from 1979 until her retirement in 2009. She was lifelong member of the criminal police and the sheriff's association. Uh, her services will be Wednesday at 10 o'clock at the Monticello cemetery.
Thank you. Mr. Summers?
Nothing seems, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Favor eye?
Aye.
I see you on the 11th of July.